To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask, have a teacher of the year, a new teacher of the year recognition?
Yes, yes, Board. Dr. Smith and I would like to take this moment to introduce to you our teachers of the year from our schools, and we have some gifts for them. So we'll start, and I'm gonna let Dr. Smith sit in here.
We will start with Island Institute. We're recognizing teacher of the year Rachel O'Gall. Really cute cookies that we're giving them with their shirts.
We had cookies made with our logo song. She will sing that. Our next teacher of the year is Ms. Royce.
She will teach his third grade.
And we have, we're also, we're recognizing teachers of the year and new teachers of the year. So I'd like to introduce Michaela Coleman as our elementary school new teacher.
Michaela is our librarian at the elementary school. I forgot to hold up the cookies. And next, we'll move to the intermediate middle school, and we're so pleased to present Lee Lumen as the teacher of the year at the intermediate middle school. Jordan teaches fourth grade. And we have three additional people to recognize. Daniel Brownie, English teacher at the high school, is our teacher of the year, and unfortunately, he's under the weather, so we will make sure he gets his cookies.
You better hide it.
Our new teacher of the year at the high school is Deanne Johnson, and her daughter is playing lacrosse today in Gatlinburg, so she was unable to get here. We wish them much luck.
And then we have our new teacher of the year at the intermediate middle school, and that's Benjamin Milk, and he's not able to be here. We have to, we'll try to move him. They're keen and they are good.
So let's give all of our teachers, let's thank the teachers of the year.
Yeah, we can't thank you enough. I know what you do is tough right now, and we appreciate everything that you do for us, or for your students, for us, for the schools, for the city. We, we can't say enough, so thank you all very much. All right. Item six, approval of the agenda. Your motion. Make the motion. Mr. McNish, second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, approval of the minutes from the February ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I want to take a motion.
Motion by Mr. Chadwick.
Second.
Second by Ms. Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Currie's. On the ninth of May, Executive Committee reports.
Make a motion, we pay our bill. Make a motion, we pay our bill.
Motion by Mr. McNish.
Second.
Second by Ms. Murray.
Did, did Rick, Rick made the motion. Just need a second.
Two seconds then. I, I missed, okay? I, I did bad. Thank you, Rick.
Who do you want me to use?
Mr. Chadwick and Ms. Murray.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, you're next to him.
We take turns.
Yeah. On to new business. Item ten, approval of LCHS gym air conditioning project number twenty-one double oh four, proposal request number two. Total price is forty thousand thirty-three dollars.
So Board, you have, you have information in your packet detailing this proposal request, and Bryant, Ms. McDonald is here to answer any questions or explain what that particular proposal encompasses.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clark. It has some visuals for you, but unfortunately, well, fortunately for you, I upgraded your computer system, but the technology didn't allow me to plug in, so I'll try my best to describe what's going on. This particular proposal is divided into two parts. The first part is where we had the forum, or rather, eight openings in the north wall of the gym for the new large air conditioning unit ductwork up through the wall. And I think the last meeting, I said that we were hoping when we cut those openings, and we didn't hit anything. Well, we did, lucked out. However, right along the edges of those openings are some conflicts, conduits, some steel brackets, some steel support beams, that were forbidding us from doing the structural metal over those openings as required to brace it now that we've cut holes in the wall. So we had to design a new system for that. And in the process of that, we're gonna have to do a little bit more demolition between each of the openings, and we'll have to put some scaffolding up for that, and then protect the floor like they did before when they cut the initial openings. And got an opportunity next week during spring break to do that, students have been gone. So a lot of steel involved there and the demolition. And so the price of that first item is thirty thousand and eighty-seven dollars, and we recommend approval of that. And let me go ahead and describe the second item. The second item is the two large gable windows on each side of the gym, the translucent windows. We're doing a little work there where we've removed an old fin tube radiator along the base of the window, the window seal. And in looking at that, there's some additional work that I think really enhances the look of those, those windows, as far as trim works and painting and so forth. And on the, what was referred to, I think, as orange seating balcony side, that particular window, you can walk right up to it and be pretty much level with the window sill. The opposite side where the alumni training center is, of course, the window is up probably ten feet above the floor there, so you don't see it as much or notice it as much. However, we're proposing that, that do some enhancements, some additional trim work around those windows, painting the, the steel columns in between the windows that still have the original, I think, schoolhouse green color, and just making that look a little bit better. Now, this is something you do not have to do. It's not a code requirement, not anything that's integral to, you know, the function of the building, but I think it would help. And the price to do all that painting, the additional trim work, and there is a couple of holes in the steel columns where the old fin tube piping went, and we're gonna go ahead and do that anyway. Where the holes were cut, the steel has kind of got some sharp edges, and on the balcony side of the seating, you can actually reach and touch it, so we'll make sure that, that's taken care of. So the total cost of that work is nine thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars. And so that gave us the total of the, I think, forty thousand and thirty-three dollars. You could choose to do both of these and just do the first one, which is required, because that's what we gotta do in order to brace those openings.
As far as wind, what, I mean, the trim, can we do one? I, I mean, I'm looking, I can see the balcony side, but are you, I mean, are you gonna be able to see?
Not, not as much. On the other side.
Randy, have you seen it? I mean?
No, I have not, I have not seen that, but, I mean, what are your thoughts? How?
Well, you could do the balcony side, I think, because you can walk right up to it and see it. And the other side, you really, you won't notice as much. We could do half of it, and that would cut that cost proposal in half.
What, I mean?
Or you could do it.
I think we do it right.
And just do it.
I mean, that, that's.
With, with what we've got invested in it already.
What, four thousand?
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, four thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna try to add something, but it's just something that.
I mean, is it something that's gonna, you're gonna look, wow, that's worth four thousand dollars, or you're gonna be like, I mean, seriously, I, I, I mean?
I understand, I understand. It's, it's hard.
Is it painting? Is it trim?
It's painting, it's, it's trim work, it's, yeah, and of course, fact that it's up, way up high, the scaffolding's what makes it, you know, cost more, or to get to it. If, if we do it, we're gonna use that opportunity while the scaffolding's there to go up and inspect those two units that are in that window, make, make sure that everything's working right on there. It gives us an opportunity to check those while, while we're there, so.
Well, now, maybe we think, because we might find something.
We're not looking for anything, but if, and it gives the maintenance people a chance to get up there and do anything they might need to do, so it's got a little bit advantage from that standpoint.
Questions? Comments? Pleasure of the board.
Well, last month, we got one hundred and something thousand dollar credit, and this month, we're gonna spend it right back again.
Of course, it does, anyway.
Yeah.
I, I would make a motion that we just do both.
Approve the whole total, forty thousand thirty-three dollars. That's the motion.
As much as we've already got invested in it, it might as well look nice as well.
Have a motion to?
Second.
Second, Ms. Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forty thousand dollar post, there you go. Next, all right, approval of LCHS gym air conditioning project number twenty-one double oh four, request number three. Total price of this, twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Twenty thousand.
Oh, what did I say?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty, oh, man, I say, twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety.
Okay. This one goes back really into the design phase, when, when we wrestled with, with how far we would take this project, given the budget, you know, that we had, and trying to stay within that budget. But there's an existing mechanical system in the lobby and the, what was the toilets up above, that is obviously very old, and the unit for that system is sitting over the top of stair B. That's the stair closest to the high school. And of course, it's fifty-five years old, still working, but in the process of doing all the renovation for this project, we have to remove that unit in order to get the steel beams in the underside of the roof that supports the new mechanical units. And then a lot of the ductwork will have to come down as well. We don't think that unit is gonna survive that move. It's already, we've already noticed that it's leaking something, some type of fluid, and it's just ventilation only, essentially. It's not AC, just ventilates the space. Given the fact that it's that old, also, it, it's the fact that where it is, it's in the stair, and it doesn't serve the stair, it serves other spaces, so we've got a separated fire separation between the two, and that, that's presented quite a challenge. So as we've done other things, and discovered other things, and realized that trying to work around these systems, we, we think it's prudent just to get rid of it, and then put in a new system entirely. Now, we've already got a new AC system for the upstairs classrooms, that's taken care of, but we don't have one for the lobby, and concession stands below. The concession stands below is our main concern, because, you know, when you're working in there, it, it's hot, right? Of course, it's not, no AC to it, so we think that ought to be just demoed out. And then, in the process of doing that, when they cut that, get it out, there's a hot water piping loop that goes around through it, there's no cutoff valve at that unit, which normally you would have. Fifty-five years ago, they, they didn't do that so much. So they had to drain the system, and then fill it back up, so that's, that's part of the cost. And the price of that was seven thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars. Now, there's ductwork down in the lobby ceiling as well. I had a photograph, I'm sorry, I can't show it, but the ceiling down there is not that great a shape, wrestled with replacing it originally, but decided we could try to live with it. But in demoing the ductwork, in demoing the sanitary waste line, it was approved in a previous cost proposal, they, they're having to just take that ceiling apart and trying to put it back, you know, it's not gonna look very good. And I noticed that the panels don't match. Over, over the years, the panels have been replaced, they don't exactly match. And then, in taking a closer look, last couple of weeks or so, I've noticed that the grid is, is rusting in several places. So that's, that's your first impression when you walk into the gym is the lobby. And so when you spend all this money, you know, walking the lobby, you look up and say, oh, that ceiling doesn't look very good. We think it's, it needs to be replaced. The lighting is still good. The lighting was replaced a number of years, years ago with LED lights. We can reuse those. We won't have any, any new chemical grills or anything in the ceiling. So we think that that needs to be replaced, and that cost is nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Okay, there's one more item in this. After the ceilings removed and everything's cleared out, there's a few subductors, conduits and so forth, that are supplying the lights in the gym and some of the existing HVAC unit. And they're right in the way of where we want to put our steel beams. So we're gonna have to reroute a few of those. That's not a huge item, two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars for that. So that's all part of it. Now, we removed the mechanical unit above stair B, we don't have to worry about the conduit certain of, those will be abandoned, they'll go away. And then we got the contractors overhead profit, sales tax, labor burden, and bond, one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This mainly subs work, so this market is not very much over five percent of those. So the total of this is twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. That will get rid of the old system, provide a new ceiling, and ceiling in the lobby, and then the next month, I'll present the proposal to put a new AC down in the concession part. We'll get some credit for some work we were wanting to do on that old unit, and then add for the new AC for that. I'll present that next month for your consideration. So we recommend approval of this. Close question number three, an amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. This one or the previous one, don't have any time attached to it. Work done in a lot of contract times, we'll add it to it.
The unit you're talking about, the ventilation unit you're talking about replacing, is the new unit ventilation only, or is it actual air conditioning?
Actually, air conditioning.
That lobby does, that doesn't look nice. It's, we're doing all these renovations when you walk in, and we haven't touched that out there.
I've poured sweat working eighteen concession gates.
Pretty total, I'd stick many of it.
It's a very confined space, there's a lot of heat to it.
It's very confined.
Popcorn machine puts the heat out, I tell you. I mean, a popcorn pop through there.
Okay.
Question? Pleasure of the board?
We're intending a motion.
Motion that we approve the request for twenty thousand.
Second.
Mr. Chadwick, second by Ms. Murray. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Item number twelve, approval of LCHS gym renovation project, request number six.
Okay. Now, I skipped lunch today, so you're really tempting me with these cookies made up, and I should have left them there. Okay, this is on the renovation project. Two items totaling six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. First item is, there was some existing fire alarm devices that we were hoping to reuse located in the center of the four corners of the gym where the vegetables exit out to the exterior. Fire alarm, pull stations, corn stroke devices, and we had hoped to leave some of the walls that they were on, but in the end, we ended up having to tear them out. So we had to replace all those devices with new devices. The wiring for all the devices already in the project is just the devices themselves, and, let's see, there were a total of eight devices. Yeah. And so the, of course, the fire alarm pull stations are on the wall, and the corn stroke devices originally are on the wall as well, but we're gonna move those to the ceiling, get them out of the way. The cost for that is four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. Now, the second item on this cost proposal is, during the fire marshal's last visit, there was a door to the electrical room, northwest side of the gym, the door swings out. As you're exiting the gymnasium through the lobby to your left, right before you go through that vegetable, there's a door there, goes into the electrical room. It's a three foot, six inch wide door, a little unusual, and it swings out instead of in. Well, when you swing a door into a corridor, you cannot block more than one half the width of the corridor. The corridor's six foot wide, the door's three foot, six inches wide, so that extra six inches is what gets us. We, we made a few arguments about, well, this door rarely gets open, it's on a closer, it's open, it closes automatically.
Can we cut six inches off?
Yeah.
Go around just a bit.
Well, there's, you know, we, we looked at all that, but anyway, we were going to reverse the swing of the door, which we could do, but we had to put a new frame in. So we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to reuse old frame that the door installers said that that wouldn't work. So the price of that is one thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We're using the door, but we're putting in a new frame. We actually got the same condition on the opposite side of the gym, but the corridor's wider there, so we didn't have to work out it up there. So you add on the contractors overhead profit taxing bond of nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, gives you a total of six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Now, when we first got this cost proposal, it was eighteen dollars more, and then the contractor said, I just noticed that you have six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars left in the contingency allowance fund. He says, what about I just knock eighteen dollars off? We take it out of contingency instead of making a change order, and then it makes the math easier. I agree, that's, that's a good thing, since he's knocking dollars off and not adding dollars in there. So he adjusted his, one of his figures, and we got it to equal the exact amount of the remaining allowance in the project. So if this is approved, it will exhaust the allowance that we had established in the contract, built into the contract, so it will not add money to the project, just exhaust the allowance.
Questions? Comments?
We gotta do it, so we make a motion, we approve.
Motion by Mr. McNish to approve the, I guess, request or change for the amount of sixty-six ninety-seven? Second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chadwick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
All right. To, to give a little perspective, for the air conditioning project, with the approvals you just made today, total of seventy-five thousand five hundred and one dollars have been added to the contract, which represents six percent of the total contract amount.
That's for the air conditioning?
For the air conditioning project.
What are you standing on the basis?
It's, with these approvals, you know, we had the big credit the last time, we've added one thousand, one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars to the project, which represents a little over five percent of the total contract amount. Much larger project still, so we're trying to stay within that ten percent.
I was thinking it for a while.
Yeah, yeah, but the renovations is a two-point-eight million dollar project. AC project is just a, was it one point two and a half? Just give you that information. Any questions? We're moving on. I understand you maybe we'll try to do a tour next, next week, and we'll be ready for that.
Well, week after next, it'll be March the twenty-third at eleven.
That's two weeks away, that's right.
So Board, our workshop will be a tour of the construction side.
We should have, most of all, the utility work in, finishes won't have started yet, but you'll be able to see everything that's, that's, that's there. And I'll, I'll have a few renderings to show what it's gonna look like when it's finished, so that you can compare what you see now to what will be.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Item thirteen, textbook, textbook adoption certification for twenty-three, twenty-four, nine, twelve math, Dr. Clark.
I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Smith.
Yes, Board. We are in a year of textbook adoption for mathematics, so instructional materials for mathematics, and we actually will be coming in another month or so with our recommendation for K eight, which is to con, will be to continue the materials that we've already been using. So we'll talk about that at a, at a later meeting. But today, our high school teachers are here, they've been working with our math instructional coach, Sherry Long, and Ms. Pierce Smith-Sins have worked really hard to lead the math department at the high school through a very rigorous process of looking at the instructional materials that are aligned best to our state standards, also what our teachers in Lenore City believe would be the best materials for our students and our community. And so they, they've endured, enjoyed a period of long process of reviewing instructional materials and really asking hard questions and pushing each other and pushing trainers and folks that have come to show us the materials. And so, super proud of the work, a lot of extra work that they put in to really find the best fit for the students in Lenore City Schools. So I turn it over to Ms. Pierce and Ms. Sins to talk us through it.
I'm Ms. Pierce and Ms. Sins. We just wanted to detail the process we went through and then give our decision that we made as a team. So over the summer, I had the opportunity to sit on the State Committee for Textbook Review and High Quality Instructional Materials Review. And as a part of that process, we came back from the summer with two front-runners, Open Up Resources and Sawis Realized Learning Materials. And so, starting in December, we actually sat our math department down as a team, and we, with the help of Ms. Long, shortened that rubric that I used over the summer with the State Committee, and just honed in on our critical standards, and our department worked through that rubric with both sets of materials to see which one more aligned to the state standards and to the instructional focus documents that the state puts together to help us meet the expectations of the mathematics standards. And we completed that review by the end of January with a lot of diligent work from our team. And we voted, and our, our recommendation is.
Yes, I think after getting the, the whole math team together, and we talked about the rubric, and some of us had actually used both curriculums in our classroom when we got to talk about our experience, and we all voted, and we felt like the Sawis was the best high-quality instructional material for our students in Lenore City.
So we would like to propose that we go forward with that adoption of the Sawis Realized Materials.
Thank you, thank you, teachers. So Board, you have on your agenda to approve our textbook adoption certification based on the recommendation of our teachers for Math nine twelve.
Hard to turn that down.
Based on the recommendation of our teachers, that make the motion we approve.
I'll second. No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed?
They've worked a long time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for all the hard work.
Yes, they put a lot of very intense work into finding just the right materials, and it's been led by the teachers, for sure. We, sometimes they like that, sometimes they don't. We let them really tell us what they think is best for our kids, so very proud of our math department and Ms. Long.
Day in, day out, they know.
That's right.
Thank you. Item fourteen, ESTR 3-point old public funds for remaining funds for 2023. Dr. Barker?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Orr.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. As you have in front of you, a flyer that we have printed out QR codes on it, front and back. On one side, you have ESTR plan update. One of the requirements we have to do is every six months, we have to provide an update to our ESTR plan, how we're spending the federal money that we receive. In this particular update, there were no major changes, but what we did do, we decided to put this flyer out that has information again about the ESTR plan on one side and our strategic plan on the other. We are required to gather feedback from stakeholders as well as community members. And this gives them the opportunity to see a broad overview, as you can see, what we're spending our money on, and then to scan this QR code to provide feedback. It takes them directly to a survey question, where they can answer that and provide us with feedback. We get that feedback, and we take it into consideration before we make decisions on how we're going to spend any remaining funds. So as you can see there, you know, how we're spending our money, a lot of it goes to just the fact that the staff members are using it for, we're using it for technology in the classroom, professional development, and high-quality instructional materials. Any questions?
Let me say thank you, Mr. Orr and Dr. Smith as well, and our principals. They are integral in this process. We are continually working to make sure that we're using our dollars efficiently for student services. And I will say, there has been a lot of discussion, just as late as today, one of the national magazines, I got an email indicating they're doing an article on schools not having, schools who haven't spent all of their ESTR dollars. Well, we have till June of 2024 to actually get all of that spent. So if you see newspaper articles that say schools have only spent 50% of their ESTR dollars, it's because we've got two more years. We still have time. So we're not behind the eight ball. We have completely spent out our ESTR 1. And Ms. Susie Helms is back here, she's our grant administrator and accountant. And so she makes sure that we are spending every dollar that we have, and we don't send any back. And so we are on top of that, but it does give you kind of a balance of where we are in the process and what we're spending our money on.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item fifteen, approval of the following proposed policy revisions. The same one we looked at over the workshop, I think you'll have opportunity to review. Any questions, any comments we can either vote on altogether or individual?
I'll get it.
Okay. You've seen approval of the following proposed policy revisions, 4.603 promotion and retention, 5.1141 teacher affect data, 5.607 non-school employment, and finally, 5.70 interim employees. Hear a motion?
We're in a motion we pass A, B, C, and D.
A motion by Mr. Chadwick to approve the policy revisions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Murray. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Item sixteen, suit and ten comments.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Board. There's a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. First of all, we are actively out recruiting for new employees, both certified employees and classified employees. And so coming up, March the 31st, you have a flyer in front of you, we're going to have a job fair here at Central Office from nine to 12. And we have, we have a dream team going out, recruit to job fairs, recruiting teachers. And so yesterday, we had a team, Mr. Orr, Mr. Walker, and Mr. Brandon, I don't see him in here, the three of them went to UTK. And we have a new display board over here that we're using as they go out to recruit teachers to Lenore City Schools. So it gives them a snapshot of the district and lets them know what a wonderful place it is to work. And they had a lot of success yesterday and came back very excited. Mr. Orr, do you want to tell them about some of the things that you were giving out at the fair?
Well, you've got a few things in front of you. We're trying to, I told somebody today, our booth was like, Lenore City threw up on it. So anyway, there's just a few things that we're giving away to teachers that come by. We're collecting resumes as they come by. Saw a lot of, a lot more ESL certified people this year. I think that's something that UT is pushing, and obviously something we're looking for. So that's, hopefully, will be beneficial to us down the road here. Anyway, you have a few of the goodies that we're giving away, so, and we've got more stuff on the way that we're using semester money for, speaking of, to promote retention and recruitment to our district. So we're always looking for good people. I think yesterday was in fact, we've got other affairs we're going to, we're going to one at ETSU, Tennessee Tech, and then we're sending two different groups to Texas, looking for some ESL bilingual people coming up later this month. So excited about that, hopefully that'll be worth our time.
So we are out there looking for the very best to serve our students. So thank you, thank you to the team as well. It was interesting, yesterday when they were at UTK, Ms. Orr was telling me that there were people from other states there as well, set up, just like we're planning to go to some other states to recruit.
There were two from California, one right across, one right next to us is the Calhoun County from Georgia, had a booth right across from us. I was telling Dr. Parker or Schmidt that there was a, Rutherford County was there, and they were hiring people on the spot at the job, they were hiring people, just because there's such a need, and of course, their district is growing like crazy. It's like a lot of people, but anyway, it's interesting.
There's a lot of competition out there for good people.
See what we're up against.
That's right. Thank you, thank you. Also, I want to thank Sheila and our administrative assistants who have worked to provide you an updated organizational chart. We have some, you know, new faces in our district here at the Central Office and in the leadership team, and we've changed some job roles. So you have a new organizational chart there. Tomorrow, I am going to send this out to all of the staff, everybody in the district, so that they can have that as well. We also have a new telephone list with who is in charge of what departments. And so we've had a lot of change in the last several years, and it's just time that we get all of that information solidified. We've got some wonderful people in these spots. And so trying to communicate out who's where, and if you're having, if you need to call somebody about payroll, or travel, or wanting to go to a conference, you know exactly who to reach out to. So you have a copy of that as well for your information. And then I'm super excited to share with you that in the last month, actually in the last two weeks, our school district has received national recognition on a couple of different initiatives. There was an article at Edweek, which is a national education newspaper, about our summer programming. And actually, that was about our tutoring program, wasn't it? That was about our tutoring program, highlighting the work that we have done there. And that's gotten quite a bit of attention. And then we also had a research organization out of Vanderbilt, Tennessee Educational Research, that is a nationally recognized entity, and they did a profile on our district for our summer programming. And so that has come out. So those are two highly touted entities that have recognized the work that our school district is doing. And that only happens because of the people who are in our district and the people who are working hard every day to serve students. And they're not asking for recognition, these are people that are reaching out to us saying, we want to know what you're doing because we're watching. And so, again, I just want to say thank you. Our teachers every day in the classroom are making a difference, and we're trying to provide the resources, materials, and programs that will help move our students through all of the challenges that they've had in the last couple of years, and to continue to excel, not remediate, but excel and promote them as we go. So I want to let you know about those items. Tomorrow, I'm going to be sending out an email to everybody in the district and attach those publications so that they have had that with them as well. And then, speaking of coming up, next week is spring break, and I see a lot of smiles.
Smiles, I was going to say.
So that's exciting, and we want everybody to have a wonderful break.
Well deserved.
And then lastly, you have a flyer for Don Out for Education. This benefits the Loudoun County Education Foundation that provides teacher grants, classroom grants for our teachers. And there is a pancake breakfast, April the 22nd at Aubrey's. I have tickets, they're $10. And so anybody, anybody that would like a ticket, you can see me today. Or I will have them up until the actual date, which is April the 22nd. So we look forward to having a little bit of time for our teachers to take a break coming up next week, and then we're ready to hit the ground running for the end of school.
That's all that. Any update on news out of national on our budget or anything?
Yes, yes, yes. I have received the first initial budget.
Estimate.
Estimate, thank you, thank you. And so I will say that Angela did a preliminary estimate, and it's pretty close, using the information that we have. So we are looking at that. There are certain things we're still learning about what will be included in that and what will not be included in that. For instance, SROs, safety money, that kind of things, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. And so initially, we do have a little over $2 million in additional funds. And so we will be looking to see how that looks.
Legislature's still in session, I don't...
They are.
Be careful.
They are, they are.
They're going to continue to see the estimate.
And Brian will be back next week, I mean, next month, excuse me.
So we are, our principals have submitted their initial budgets, our supervisors have been working on their budgets. So we will have a lot of requests, and we are working through those and prioritize those. We'll bring those to you pretty soon.
Anybody, questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wish you had said that while Brian was not in the room. Oh, again. Twenty dollars extra, right?
Any further business? Your motion, we adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second. Second by Mr. McNish, all in favor?
Aye.
Any adjourn?
Motion by Dr. Murray.
Oh, yeah.